All right, pledges. I pledge the way they just stood the flag, we have to say so America. And the Republic which stands one nation under God and invisible with better change than. Dead. Okay.
Your news my way.
Switch it all the way on the back.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay. Um, we have us before the consent calendar. I think Commissioner Sossi, you wanted to pull something from the account, put it on the discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to talk more about the radar data from the Police Department monthly report, and I would also like to talk about the Harbor Master report. I have a few questions, but I know neither.
Well, if you have questions, we can just ask the questions in the same calendar, but if you want to discuss it, we can put a discussion, which was your preference?
We can just leave a consent then, and I'll just ask my question.
Okay, go free.
Um, okay, so looking at the data from the eight hundred block of East Harbor on page fourteen of the um the packet, I noticed there's three hundred thousand trips. Is that typical? Like, what do we typically expect during this time of year? And what is it normally? Do we know?
I mean, it just tracks what there is there. So I mean, it's it's just a counter, so.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, so those are twenty days during Bowie ten.
Right.
So when it's not Bowie ten, what is the average?
That's a great question. We would have to look at right radar that is not during Bowie ten.
Okay, yeah, yep, I will.
Also caution about extrapolating Bowie ten with that address because Bugle isn't necessarily in Bowie ten area. It's that's up.
Fort Stevens more.
No, Bugle should be.
I'm sorry.
Bugle should be over by the jail.
No, I'm looking at Harbor.
Oh, Harbor, I'm sorry.
There was data at Harbor, and then there was one at Bugle, and then there was one at first.
Oh, eight hundred block Harbor, never mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I believe you're referring to the one on Harbor.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and we did have a very busy um Bowie ten season this year.
Yeah, which Jessica highlights in her report. Um, and then the other, I mean, I reading through this, seeing the number of people that were going, you know, one person was going a hundred and four miles per hour, the average speed was, you know.
I did want to have the chief wanted me to mention where you see a hundred mile an hour, sometimes occasionally the radar would catch two cars at the same time and merge them into one.
Okay.
So this, and so when there's a couple hundred mile an hour ones, it's actually probably two vehicles, especially the one where it's in a three block radius, there's no chance of them getting up to a hundred miles. There's very few cars in Warrenton that could go that fast in three blocks. Um, so most of that data is actually, if if there was a police officer there, they would be able to differentiate and split them apart. The radar sometimes would just track both as one.
Okay.
Um, so most of those hundred mile an hour are actually two different vehicles.
I'd also just note that that was a time period when the Crab Pot Bridge was closed. So traffic over that area is probably much heavier than it would have otherwise been because the Crab Pot Bridge.
Right, but the bridge was closed.
Oh, that's interesting, too.
Yeah, but the chief wanted me to be sure and mention that. He said, I'm sure that's gonna come up tonight. They're gonna see a hundred mile an hour and they're.
Well, but even relative to the other two speed reports, the radar data, you know, there was a third of these um visits or the amount that the radar picked up that were excessively over the posted speed limit. So that relative to the other two reports is pretty concerning, especially considering there's a school there. This is an area that a lot of people bike and walk like right on the shoulder. So I didn't know how we're using this data to ensure pedestrian and biker safety or like, are we thinking about that? And what are we using? How are we using this data to then move forward with planning for that area?
Um, it definitely can inform future conversations about pedestrian paths along there. I mean, we've had conversation in the past about developing pedestrian path along there. Um, we've just had no budget for it, and that's been part of the issue. Um, but we had recently requested that ODOT, you know, lower the speed in that area and and they did, you know, go to thirty five in the one section. Um, and we had requested even considering like thirty. Um, so there's things, there are some things when we look at these and we're aware of and thinking, you know, we've had at least one casualty, but unfortunately, that person did go into the road with their skateboard and were hit. Um, but there have been interactions that have been concerning regarding pedestrians and and motor vehicles. Um, so definitely things to keep in mind, but the hard part is too, it's not our road. And so some of that, how we control that, it's some of it's out of our hands, unfortunately.
Okay, but this data will just give us more leverage, I guess, with ODOT to have those conversations around safety and read.
A little bit, and yes and no. They usually look at their own data. Uh, it's more us when we request as, you know, the as a city requesting a a speed change, they it often is just informed by their own studies. Um, but we can still request things whether or not they always agree.
Okay, I guess then my question would be like, what would be the purpose of even doing these radar studies if we can't use the data and nothing is gonna happen because of it?
Uh, well, first of all, it helps because when people see that sign flashing at them, they often slow down.
Okay.
And sometimes we might consider whether we would permanently install like a flashing one if that is, if that helps to slow people down. Now, some of these studies show it may or may not. Um, but if it, you know, does, like, for example, on Lake Drive, we did install one on Lake Drive because people were consistently speeding, and it does flash at them, and I believe it does help keep people at a lower speed now. So we do, it's they're they're fairly expensive. It's like five thousand dollars per um installation, but depending on where it is, if we have the right to install it, we often look at that as a further option.
Okay, that is very helpful. Anyone else have questions? Okay, I'll move on. Um, and then the Harbor Master report, I was thrilled to see, you know, the increase in revenue. Was it seventy five thousand dollars over anticipated? Um, percentage wise, do we know what that is?
Are you talking about how much the funds actually are?
Well, no. So in the introduction, she says the revenue reflects just how busy the season was. We're up approximately thirty two thousand dollars at Warrenton and forty three thousand. So what was that relative to?
I would say that's roughly thirty percent of the total budget, if I'm remembering correctly.
And was that due to an increase in rates or like unanticipated volumes?
I think it's both. We did increase our rates last year for parking and everything, but then also there were a a few more days of the fishing season, so we did see both.
So it was the extension of the season that allowed us to capture more revenue?
Yeah.
Interesting.
And it was a better season.
They did keep the salmon. I mentioned that at the other meeting that they kept it open.
Yeah, they kept it.
Quite a bit longer.
Yeah.
This year, like ten days or something.
Oh, okay.
Usually they slam the king fishing shut about twenty second, twenty third, but they.
Yeah, oh, well, thank you. That's ahead.
All right, is there any further questions, sir? Uh, there are a motion to approve the consent counters presented.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving and seconded post lawsuit to approve the consent counter presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, mission carries. We'll move on to public hearing, or sorry, commissioner reports. Um, Mr. Pope?
Nothing for me today.
It's lots of.
Uh, we had Cedar today, which was, which was great. Um, we had an update from Clots of Works. There were three or four businesses in Warrenton that participated. And I think five or six students from Warrenton High School that also got to participate, and those are paid internships to encourage students to enter the workforce, expose them to different types of businesses. Um, I would love to see more of our local businesses participate in that. So I was gonna talk to Misty a little bit more about what that might look like, also generate some more economic excitement about what's going on in Warrenton. Um, the other communities provided some updates. I think the Seaside Chamber, they were able to get more than a hundred thousand dollars than they anticipated for the volleyball tournament. And I know that that probably brought brought in some business for Warrenton, which is exciting, and next year it's gonna be five days, I believe. So those were a few of those those updates for Cedar. There was also the Northwest Oregon Housing Summit that I attended yesterday, or I attended part of it yesterday. Really exciting to see what's going on in Tillamook, Columbia, and other counties with regards to just innovative strategies around housing, especially affordable housing, financing, and then changes around lumber and mass timber, and Jeff was there as well. So I think we have some really good, some really good learnings to bring back to the community um and relationships. And then the trick or trot from the Parks Alliance is happening October twenty sixth. Wear your costumes, and I want to just give a shout out to Public Works Lily for helping to facilitate that application process. I know it's the first five K that I think has ever happened in the community, so a lot of moving pieces, a lot of questions, and it took a lot of teamwork to make sure that we're gonna get that done. And then, um, oh, another update from Cedar, the Community College has an opening for a board member for someone from our community. So if anyone is looking for experience and cares about local community college, I would encourage you to to reach out to them, to see what that process looks like and to throw your hat in the ring. So that's it.
Thank you.
Uh, just a little update on um Spruce Up uh during our last meeting. Um, it was discussed uh how we're gonna keep um people engaged in the community now that Fall Festival has been canceled for this year. Um, the 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 hope is to do a, reach out to the community, ask them what they'd like to see, and hopefully engage, be able to engage people by their interests to uh contribute and become part of the board. Uh, I I I think that Spruce Up is 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 moving in a in a right direction. But again, with only three board members, it becomes very difficult for an organization like that to to maintain any forward momentum. So I suggested if there's anybody here who has uh any interest in serving, uh, contact the the board and uh you can go to their website. Uh, I also suggest that uh, you know, if you if you'd like to see something happen in this community, that you you step forward to them and and give your input on to, you know, what we'd like to see more fa, you know, family friendly sort of events, because uh, I think when Spruce Up looks at what, how they see envisioned the community, we look at it as a family friendly community geared towards uh making sure that the family unit can can uh have access to different events in within town.
Thank you. City manager?
Uh, just one note on the consent calendar. You had an update on CIPs, and my fire chief was out on a well deserved vacation, but he stopped by and mentioned uh the diesel exhaust system, which is also in the CIP. We're planning that will start for the Warrenton um department in November. Um, and then Hammond will be later on, and then also the fire truck, we're starting that process for funding soon, so.
Awesome. Um, city recorder? All right, uh, I'll just note, um, I was on a disconcerting call, uh, I guess you could say, uh, with the Organist for Flood Plane Protection Coalition uh yesterday, and um I'll just put it this way. I mean, it's one thing, uh, I've been talking about the FEMA bio for quite a bit. I'm still chewing through uh parts of it, but um it's one, I I think the public in general has a difficulty grasping that this is not about trees, and this isn't, I mean, trees have a part to play in the bio mitigation strategy. But it's not about trees, and it's not about wetlands. It's about floodplain development. And if Risk two point O gets passed, things that people developed properties become floodplain all of a sudden. But it's one thing for a governmental agency to provide data and then tell you their policy outlook on that data and why they want to do what they want to do. Um, and uh typically, people will accept government data as straight up true, because why would the government lie or mischaracterize something? Um, at least that's a good starting point for most people. Um, the disconcerting part about the call was um the economics, when I when I was reading through the bio, the economic analysis is um very kind of head scratching. You're kind of looking at like, seems a little low for Warrenton. That seems a little low for Clots of County, how many places or households are in the special flood hazard area? And and uh, you know, these economic analysis is on like the impact seem a little low. Well, turns out, we quantified it. So for Clots of County alone, they overcounted our population by over twelve thousand people, which means the percentage of people affected is a lesser number, because the more you inflate the number, the less people are affected in terms of percentage. And that also means that the cost benefit ratio and the economic analysis for that's required under the NEPA process becomes different, because it's treated differently. They counted fifty eight thousand more households in Clots of County than exists. They also counted six hundred and ninety thousand more acres than Clots of County has in its extent, you know, that exists. And then they underestimated the state GDP by twenty five billion dollars. So not only are we getting railroaded by FEMA, um, but they're lying all the way on to it. And uh, I think the thing that bothers me the most is that I can have a policy difference with a government agency. I have a difficulty being uh being harmed, for lack of a better term, as a community with data that was used to make that statement that was completely false to start with. And I don't know if it is uh either, it's gotta be either one of two things. It's either gotta be um, there's something else going on in the background. Um, and I'll have the conspiracy theories figure that one out. Or it's just gross incompetence, at which case then this whole thing needs to be redone again. Um, and so uh I just wanted to let, put that out in the ether. Clots of County is putting out some good podcasts about this. Um, we've only had uh less than a month to read through this whole thing. I'm still not done with it. Um, it's burning up a lot of my nights, but um uh, it's it's very alarming to see what the bio is gonna be doing to this community. And it's also concerning to me that despite us talking about this for several years, people still conflate this with, oh, no, this is good. This is gonna stop people from logging trees. No. It's very important to note that people that like to think that this is some sort of way to backdoor keeping their neighborhoods green and wonderful, it has nothing to do with that, because most of the logging that occurs in the city of Warrenton is done under the Oregon Forest Practices Act, which civic culture, which is tree farming essentially, is an exempt practice under the bio, because they gotta replant. So even though in this case they don't replant, but that's neither here nor there related to how it relates to the bio. So uh, people thinking that they're supporting this so that they can keep their neighborhood green are actually harming themselves, because now all of a sudden that lean to they wanted to put on, or that trailer they're gonna store for longer than six months, all of a sudden now is not allowed, or is gonna require mitigation. And so um, there's a kind of a significant hurdle in trying to um it it's so complex that it's really hard to get it distilled to the public, other than it's a big land grab, essentially. So um, the good news is that as the coalition was talking, and as different jurisdictions were reporting, they also had erroneous data that was being used um for their community that people are starting to really rally around the flag, so to speak, and and start to say, this is not right. You know, people that were kind of like, well, this is kind of kind of sucks. They're actually finally starting to to push for action. So um, I'm hopeful that we'll get more than the original only ten public comments on this issue. Um, and I'm also hoping that this will uh this will help fuel congressional action to fix this more permanently, and also to assist with our lawsuit against FEMA to try and get this stopped, because this is not flood insurance. This is um, this is essentially just a land grab, so.
Yeah, I I will tell you that I've had a lot of comments, especially since I appreciate you doing that. Ever since you uh did your live thing on online and then posted on Facebook, I've had people reach out to me. I think people would very much like to have a community forum. Again, you, we did one about a year or so ago, but I think that people are are getting a little bit more aware to have deeper questions um, and and really are concerned. I know that some developers have reached out, and they're they're afraid to sort of move forward on some things because they don't know how this is gonna affect them. Uh, I really, I really uh hope that we can maybe bring together some sort of public forum and uh bring in some people who could answer some of their questions.
If we do, it'll have to be for October sixth, and that's the that's the time crunch, um, because that's the end for the public comment deadline for the FEMA, so. Um, I'll see what we can do, but schedules are really tight right now, so um, it's not, it's a good idea, though.
I did I did have one thing. Crest is having a fiftieth anniversary celebration at the Barbie Maritime Center Saturday, the fourth, from two to four, and it's a family for, or three to five, excuse me. It's a family friendly. They're gonna have activities for kids and all that, and they'll be posting up all their projects, you know, so you can people can go and look at all that, but anyway, just an activity for family.
Thank you, Commissioner Poe. We'll uh, we'll move on to our public hearings, actually, public comments. Do we have any public comment cards? I don't have any in front of me, so. None from the online either?
Yeah.
Okay, so we will move on to the public hearings. Um, so first one we're gonna do is the renaming of streets, Northeast Iredale Avenue to Isobar. Uh, we'll need a motion to continue it to October twenty eighth, but uh, this is the time, well, we're gonna open it anyway. This is the time for a public hearing in the matter of renaming Northeast Iredale Avenue to Isobar Avenue. This time we'll open the public hearing. Uh, staff has requested continue the hearing to October twenty eighth to allow the planning commission the opportunity to review the matter and bring forward a recommendation. Is there any questions of staff? If not, is there a motion to continue the hearing to October twenty eighth?
So moved.
Seconded.
We would have seconded Poe Mitchell to continue the public hearing to October twenty eighth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. There was no disclosures on that one, because we'll do that when we actually conduct the hearing itself. Uh, all right, this next one we have is amending ordinance number twelve seventeen. So this is the time for a public hearing in the matter of ordinance number twelve ninety six, amending ordinance number twelve seventeen, vacating certain streets in the plot of Warrenton Park and in the plot of Portsmouth addition to Warrenton of the city of Warrenton. This time we'll open the public hearing. Um, do we have any public comments registered for this uh hearing?
I have not received any.
Okay, and there's none that's been registered online?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so uh, the application, the testimony, arguments, and evidence in this hearing must be directed toward the applicable criteria standards identified in the staff report uh, or to other criteria in the Development Code or Comprehensive Plan that you believe applies to this decision. The application before the city this evening must be decided based on these criteria, despite the importance of other issues that may be raised during the public hearing. The authority of the city is limited only to those issues that address compliance with the applicable criteria. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to afford the commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the land use part of appeals based on that issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. We're gonna continue this, we're gonna conduct this hearing, I'm sorry, as follows. Ethics disclosures, the staff report, uh, questions of the staff, presentation by the applicant, commission questions of the applicant, public testimony, testimony and support, opposition, and neutral, rebuttal by the applicant, if any, and close of public testimony. The commission may deliberate deliberate if they wish, and then a motion and a vote. Uh, a decision may be made by the commission at the close of the hearing, or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain in the future. If the matter is reset to a date certain in the future, this will be the only notice of that date you receive. We shall now commence. Do any commissioners wish to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest?
No.
Please speak in light?
No.
No.
All right, let the record reflect none, and I'll say none for myself as well. Um, do members uh, do uh, members have any um ex parte contacts related to the application itself or visited the subject site?
No.
No.
Okay, hearing none?
I mean, I've been to Costco, but yeah, none.
Okay, you've been to Costco, all right.
Isn't that where it is?
Right next door.
Pretty much, yeah. Everyone, but you haven't done a spike specific investigation?
No.
Okay, all right. Uh, let the record record reflect none. Um, all right, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any commission members impartiality for the record? Let the record reflect nobody has. All right. Uh, city staff will now present the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. Um, on August twenty sixth, twenty twenty five, the city commission approved Resolution twenty seven zero eight, setting a date of September twenty third, twenty twenty five as the time and date for a public hearing to consider amending ordinance twelve seventeen, vacating certain streets in the plat of Warrenton Park and in the plat of Portsmouth, Portsmouth addition to Warrenton and the city Warrenton, Oregon. Um, the request here was to um have a full discharge of any and all drainage, ditches, utilities, and easements in this plat, so it's kind of a more of a an amendment to an existing um street vacation so that the land may be unencumbered for the purpose of repairing the site for commercial retail development. Staff has put forth a recommendation, recommended motion um, based on the application materials and staff review memo dated September twenty three, twenty twenty five. I move that the city commission conduct the first reading of ordinance twelve ninety six by title only, and then the title. Um, and so staff recommends the city commission conduct the first reading of ordinance twelve ninety six. Any questions?
Any questions of staff? All right, thank you. Um, is there an applicant applicant um present or wishing to make a presentation, Mr. Easbuck or whoever's not here? Okay.
Yeah.
So let the record reflect the applicant is not here. Um, so there is no questions for the applicant. They're not here, so. Uh, public testimony, anybody in support of the proposal? Let the record reflect none. Anybody oppose? Let the record reflect none. Anybody neutral? Just makes, wanna make a comment about it? Let the record reflect none. All righty. Um, after that robust comment period, we will now move on to uh, there's no applicant to rebut, so we will close the public testimony portion of this hearing. And uh, commissioners, any further questions or deliberations related to this? Um, is there a uh motion to um conduct first reading uh, number twelve ninety six by title only based on the application materials and staff review memo dated September twenty third, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving and seconded Poe Mitchell to, based on the application materials and staff review memo dated September twenty third, twenty twenty five, conduct the first reading of ordinance number twelve ninety six by title only. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Ordinance number twelve seventeen um, or sorry, ordinance number twelve ninety six, an ordinance amending ordinance number twelve seventeen, vacating certain streets in the plat of Warrenton Park and in the plat of Portsmouth addition to Warrenton and the city of Warrenton, Oregon. All right, finishes that here. We will now move on to a declaration of vacant commission seats. Um, so as the commission um is aware, um Commissioner Dyer has resigned a seat as of the last uh, the special meeting that we had. Um, that was when it was the effective date by, but in order for it to become official, um, the commission has to declare the seat vacant, which is position number three. Um, is there a motion to declare position, position number three on the city commission vacant?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving and seconded Mitchell Poe to declare position number three on the Warrenton City Commission vacant. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. And then um, city recorder? Um, I take it it's usually a bit of a lead time to get the plaque and all that, but I'm assuming we'll do something?
Yes, 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 there will be. Um, and then we'll have to determine how we wanna handle the presentation of that.
Sure. Thank you. Um, so that means that the position number three is vacant on the city commission, which means applications should be going live under the policy outlines um, two meetings ago. Um, that will go onto the city's website. Can, is there an estimate for when that would go live?
Um, staff would like to request that we do that on Monday, by Monday. Okay.
If that's okay with the commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then mayor, if we may, if we could make a recommendation to have that live for about three weeks, so it gives people plenty of time to bring applications forward, and then follow with a um open house to meet candidates, possibly on the Monday before the last meeting of the month in October.
I think three weeks is excessive personally. Um, we've, you know, this has been known to the community for over a month now. Um, I would suggest as the policy letter outlines, two weeks. And then close it and go that, because again, this person's gonna have to go through additional training before they get seated. So we're just dragging out the length of time in which we have a
No objection.
A four person commission. Does anybody feel differently?
I don't have a problem, huh?
Sure.
Okay, we'll move to a two week.
Okay, um, based on that, then when would you like the open house to be?
Oh, you're saying for based on the commission meeting. Um, ah, okay, gotcha. Um, I think the applications can close, and then we can have the open house at that meeting following. That gives us some time to review.
Okay.
So it's not being reviewed at the meeting.
That would, that would be, oh, excuse me, city manager, uh, so that would be closing the application period on Monday, the thirteenth. We have a meeting on the fourteenth, so I don't know if that's too quick of a turnaround to schedule a a meet and greet.
So.
And we also have work sessions scheduled before each of the October meetings, so we would need to do it on a different day.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Um, so city manager, you're talking about doing it on the twentieth instead?
We were recommending the day before the city commission meeting for the last meeting of the month, so that would give you a chance at like a five o'clock, a meet and greet the Monday before the meeting, so then you could come into the meeting ready to deliberate, you know, because we have sessions.
It would be easier to keep it open a little longer at that rate, too, so I would.
That makes sense.
Okay.
And we, I think uh, if we can update the application to just state links to the trainings and all that, um, that at least if somebody wishes to, they can get a head start. I just think it's, you know, the sooner we can get somebody seated, the better, so.
Okay.
All right.
So we're at the
The last meeting of October.
Three weeks, then.
Three weeks, leave it open, and then the meet and greet, the last Monday, so it'll be the twenty seventh at five. Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, we'll move on to consideration of Northwest Smart Storage Lease Addendum. Do you imagine?
Yeah, I have this in your packet. Um, this was discussed at the last meeting, and you have at least um one of the tenants on virtually. Um, I do apologize, there's one tiny error. It says five percent in writing and then seven percent right after that, but the intent of the commission, I believe, was seven percent. Um, so that is before you.
So that is before you to discuss and determine what you would like to do. And if you have any questions of the tenant, Adam Israel is on virtually.
Hello.
So commissioners, is there any questions or changes that you'd like to make to the proposed lease?
No.
No.
All right, Adam, do you, Mr. Israeli, do you, do you wish to make?
I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you know, whatever you guys, you know, whatever we can work, work to get this thing going through, I think it'd be good for the community to have a U-Haul spot there and also help us fill the facility. We're willing to maintain the road, stick to the rules. And if you guys want, you know, 7%, as soon as we, as soon as we get paid, I'm fine with that. I would just like to get, get, get the ball rolling with these guys.
And I don't think everyone in the room caught that, but basically he said he's good with this. He'd just like to start moving forward as soon as possible. And he understands the terms would be as soon as they start receiving money, it would be the 7%. He's okay with that.
The, okay, is there, is there a motion to approve the addendum to the Northwest Smart Storage Lease Agreement? If there's no changes or changes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moving and seconded, Mitchell's lawsuit to approve the addendum to the Northwest Smart Storage Lease Agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries and best luck to you, Mr. Israel. Let's go for consideration requests for meeting cancellations. City Manager?
Yeah, you have before you two. It's a little early for the one. We usually, we usually visit that one in November, but we thought we might as well get ahead of it because on a November 11th, that is a holiday, so the city staff would not be available for that meeting. And then also on the day before Christmas Eve is your other one. So it'd be November 11th and, and December 23rd. Due to staff not being available for those meetings, we're requesting that you cancel those two meetings per your charter. You only have to have one a month.
I mean, staff usually schedule out what topics and stuff that we're having in the meeting quite far in advance, so I don't think it's going to interrupt any critical business for us to not meet on those days, so. Any objections? Is there a motion to cancel the November 11th and December 23rd?
So moved.
Moving and seconded, Solacio Mitchell to cancel the November 11th and December 23rd commission meetings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. No discussion items will go on the good of the order. Start with you, Commissioner Mitchell.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment if I can.
Sure, of course.
So I want to read this. Former Congressman Henry Hite once said, and I quote, "Freehold speech is meaningless unless we tolerate the speech we hate," end quote. "We have a responsibility to tolerate those whom we disagree, and violence is never an answer." "I appeal to all Warrenton to be the example to those who feel that speech is a one-way street. Encourage all that tolerance is always the best direction." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Mr. Solacio?
We, my family had the pleasure of attending the Spanish speaking story hour. I think it was two weeks ago. It was very well attended. Norma Hernandez from Consejo was doing the reading, and it was just really great for my kids to be exposed to a language that they, they don't always get to hear. And it was just great to see so many families there. We were there again last weekend and there was only one family there, so I love to see just all the different ideas that Josh is bringing to the library and the library board is bringing to make sure that our library is well utilized by everyone in our community, so kudos to the library.
Nothing for me today.
Commissioner Pope, city manager?
I have a tape, take back actually. I mentioned the consent calendar and the capital improvement is on next week's, or next meeting's consent calendar. I apologize. So that when I mentioned the CIP, that's going to be on the next one. So if you're looking for it, it's not there yet, so.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. City Recorder? All right, well, we're going to go into an executive session, so I will call that here. So the Warrenton City Commission will now meet an executive sessioner, session under the authority of RS 1926602E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. The commission is not expected to return to regular sessions, take action on any item considered in the executive session.